Mr. Seggie. Mr. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Reese. Ms. Avery.
Here.
Ms. Evans.
Ms. Evans.
Ms. Evans, my apologies.
Here.
Ms. Hickman. Ms. Spooner. Thank you.
We're ready for our meeting, regular scheduled meeting. Please stand for the presentation of the colors and the pledge allegiance to the U.S. and the Texas flag.
Go on, up and up. Carry, goes. Ready, go. Forward, march, 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 go. March, 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 march. So, move. Freeze it, goes.
Good evening. Tonight's colors are presented by the Westbrook High School National Junior ROTC Color Guard. Cadet Senior Chief Petty Officer Carter Dearhog. Cadet Petty Officer First Class Kayden Mitchell. Cadet Petty First Officer First Class Christian Tenorio Rios. And Cadet Petty Officer Third Class Kayden Tran. Under the direction of Commander Mitchell Norman, U.S. Navy Retired. The pledges will be led by Marshall Middle School eighth grader and Student Council President, Anaya Mills Tate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Carry, goes. Ready, go. Forward, march, 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 go. March, 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 march. Move.
Let's get in the hands. Great job. Now we'll hear from Miss Simeon as we do some recognitions.
Good evening, President Segue, Board Trustees, Dr. Allen, and audience members. This evening we are proud to recognize the Regina Howell Elementary PTA for being named a National PTA School of Excellence for the 2024-2026 term. The distinction awarded by both Texas PTA and National PTA was given to only 330 schools nationwide. The National PTA School of Excellence program celebrates and supports PTAs that build strong partnerships among families, schools, and communities to enhance both the educational experience and the overall well-being of students. Regina Howell's PTA has worked tirelessly to embody these principles, ensuring that students and families feel supported, connected, and empowered. Their efforts reflect not only a commitment to academic success but also to the heart of what makes Beaumont ISD schools thrive: strong collaboration between parents, teachers, and the community. Please join me in congratulating the Regina Howell Elementary PTA on this prestigious national honor. Speaking on behalf of the group tonight is PTA President Sarah Brumba.
Thank you, Mrs. Simeon. Dr. Allen, board, I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity to recognize the team behind me. They, along with Principal Lund, all of our teachers, administrators, and staff have stood behind us for the last two years joining our PTA. Without their support, we could not do what we do. I want to thank everyone who took the time to complete the surveys because without y'all letting us know what we need to fix, we can't fix it. So thank you for putting up with my emails and thank you for helping us reach school of excellence. have stood behind us for the last two years joining our PTA. Without their support, we could not do what we do. I want to thank everyone who took the time to complete the surveys because without y'all letting us know what we need to fix, we can't fix it. So, thank you for putting up with my emails and thank you for helping us reach School of Excellence.
Tonight, we are proud to recognize a very special milestone in our community. The Hebert High School Class of 1975 is celebrating celebrating its 50th anniversary since graduation. Hebert High School holds a meaningful place in Beaumont's history and the class of 1975 has carried its proud legacy forward for five decades. This remarkable group of alumni has not only remained connected through the years, but many have continued to serve as leaders, mentors and role models in our community. We are especially honored that their class includes one of our very own Beaumont ISD Board Trustee Denise Wallace Spooner, who continues to exemplify the Hebert spirit of excellence and service. Please join me in celebrating the Hebert High School Class of 1975 on their golden anniversary and in honoring their continued contributions to Beaumont ISD and the community at large. Speaking on behalf of the Hebert Class of 75 tonight is Reunion Class President Jude Davis and Trustee Denise Wallace Spooner. We ask all class members to come forward.
I'd like to start off by giving honor to God. To God be the glory for 50 years. Let's give us another round of applause. Yes, that we are still here after 50 years. And it is an honor to stand here. I do not, uh, has Jude made it in yet? Okay. Okay, James Boyce is going to, he's an officer and Sergeant at Arms. Keeps us in order. He's going to come to the microphone and address the board. Thank you, James.
I want to thank you guys for letting us be here today. We have number pride to be here and honor you guys. And I want to thank y'all and motherfucker, thank these beautiful people behind me. For 50 years, we endured everything that God put in front of us and we're still here. Thank you, guys.
And, uh, our Secretary Correspondence, Secretary Liz Williams has something for our board members from the class. And I would be remiss not to ask Ms. Tilly Hickman to just stand. Tilly, one of our Hebert High School teachers, Ms. Hickman. Yes, yes, yes. And so, we are thankful for each one of my fellow board members. Dr. Allen and to you for continuing to lead this district in excellence. And we are elated to be here tonight. We have a class reunion, uh, well, the class reunion starts on August 31st. It's a week long from, uh, the 31st until September 7th. Church, Sunday 31st to church, Sunday the 7th and a lot in between. I could go on and on, but we are thrilled. Uh, one of our highlights is our movie night. We're going to partake of Jaws, which was made in 1975. The, in the month that we graduated and a lot of other activities. But thank you all very, very much. Thank you, Ms. Simeon.
The class of 75 is looking really good, aren't they? Oh, thank you very much. This water might be their secret. I'm gonna drink a couple of bottles of this tonight. And the hot sauce, okay, yeah. Finally, tonight, we are honored to recognize and celebrate the remarkable service of Georgia Antwine. Mrs. Antwine has faithfully served as the Coordinator of Board Affairs for Beaumont ISD. For decades, she has been the steady hand and guiding presence. Steady hand and guiding presence with a little sass behind the scenes, ensuring that the work of this board is carried out with excellence, integrity and professionalism. Her attention to detail, wealth of knowledge and unwavering commitment have been valuable not only to this board, but also to the district as a whole. Colleagues and trustees alike will attest that Mrs. Antwine has been more than a coordinator. She has been a trusted advisor, a problem solver and a constant source of support and laughter. Her contributions have helped keep our governance strong, our processes smooth and our mission focused on students. As she prepares to retire, we extend our heartfelt appreciation for her 30 years of distinguished service. And while we will certainly miss her presence in this role, we celebrate this well-deserved new chapter in her life. On behalf of Beaumont ISD and the Board of Trustees, we say thank you, Mrs. Antwine, for your dedication, your leadership and your lasting impact. Congratulations on your retirement.
I would like to thank all of you all, Dr. Allen, Dr. Allen, the Board and especially the Cabinet members. I am going to truly miss all of you. I was telling Mr. James this morning that, uh, or yesterday, I said, just remember if you ever want to smile, look at this picture and remember this young lady here is the one that could really get the board to let their hair down. I just want you to know that I've always wanted to put my all into everything that I've ever done. I wanted to make sure that when I left here, I came in kind of quiet and I wanted to leave kind of out with a bang, but a good bang. But I am going to miss everyone and I wanted to make sure that I didn't leave anything undone. I wanted to make sure that my work was done and finished when I left. So, thank you all.
Hold up, wait a minute, don't go nowhere. I have a remedy for the fact that you gonna miss me. Don't leave. On behalf of Board of Trustees, we have a gift for you. I don't tell you what it is, you're gonna have to open up this pretty bag. Hopefully you'll enjoy it. We are really gonna miss you. You kept me in check and that's, hadn't met anybody do that yet. But you have been able to do that. Spooner's gonna present you with a bouquet of flowers.
And if you all do not know, we have a pet name for Georgia. It's gorgeous. So, we present, the Board of Trustees, present this bouquet to you gorgeous. And as we said, don't go too far because you will always remember this, be in our hearts. We love you, Georgia.
And she's giving, uh, Ms. Smith a crash course. I think we're gonna be alright, but we gonna miss you. And I know we can call on you, right? Don't block no numbers. Don't be blocking no numbers, we all make, you know, give you a call. But we love you, gonna miss you. Like I said, remedy is don't go nowhere. Everything you did for us.
Thank you so much.
Denise, don't cry. I'm looking at her now. Joe, give me a little manpower on the other side, man. Beautiful ladies on, you know, manpower on the other side. I'm gonna give you this when you up, man. There's a money bag. A little money bag. That's a golden ticket, y'all watched that show, right?
We all heard you promise not to block our numbers, so... Finally, tonight, we invite you to watch Beyond the Bell, the official podcast of Beaumont ISD. Episodes can be found on our YouTube channel and on Spotify. You can also get information on other events in the district by following us on social media and visiting bmtisd.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Simeon. We are now at the time for Superintendent Cabinet's reports.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees and the Beaumont ISD community. As we begin every presentation, please join me in reciting our vision and mission statement. The Beaumont ISD Vision Statement, in collaboration with the entire community, we will create an inclusive environment of academic excellence that supports the diverse needs of all learners. And our mission statement, we will inspire and prepare all students for lifelong success by providing an exemplary education in a safe learning environment. Our vision and mission is founded on our six core beliefs and tonight's presentation focuses on Core Belief Number One, all children can and will learn. And Core Belief Number Two, we can achieve higher levels of performance within every facet of our organization. Tonight's presentation, I'll highlight information about our district, review our 2530 Board Outcome Goals, talk a little bit about accountability and growth and provide a few additional updates. Last Wednesday, we welcomed currently 15,568 students as of today. That's the number from yesterday. Students who are currently being educated on 25 campuses throughout the district. 2,700 employees are working all in, all year to educate our 15,568 students to ensure that we meet the needs of every single student and that they reach their goals. We've had such a great start to the 25-26 school year. You know, I haven't made my rounds to all campuses yet. However, my team has shared such phenomenal feedback and I can share phenomenal feedback and really want to thank our leaders for doing great work and making a seamless transition to the start of the school year. When you walked on campuses on the first day of school, it was just like we had been in school the whole time. And that takes a lot of planning and preparation. So, I'm just so thankful for the work that's already happening and excited about the work that's gonna happen this year. Just a review of our 2025-2030 Board Outcome Goals. You know, we finished our first five-year set of goals. We didn't meet our targets all the way. We made some progress, but we're anticipating making additional progress within the next five years. We will continue to focus on ensuring that third grade students, when they leave third grade, they score at meets grade level or above on the Star Reading exam. We will ensure, Goal Number Two, that our third grade students will score at the meets grade level or above on the Star Math Assessment. Goal Three, we will continue to work toward our graduates meeting the criteria for college career military readiness. Goal Number Four, we will continue to work on our perception in our community. And Goal Number Five, increasing the percentage of students attending A and B rated campuses. Last week, the accountability scores were released for school districts across the state of Texas. The 24, 2024 and 2025 ratings were released simultaneously. And I want to make certain that I highlight and share, you know, day simultaneously. And I want to make certain that I highlight and share, you know, data with our community on the progress that we have made as a district. While we are definitely not where we want to be, as you can see from this slide, there has been improvement on several campuses, and the district overall performance as a whole increased by three points from sixty-five to sixty-eight. But sixteen out of twenty-two campuses improved their overall accountability score or maintained a strong performance. The number of struggling campuses decreased, and the number of campuses rated C or better actually increased. Very excited about Marshall Middle School with a significant jump. They improved their letter grade, as well as Callwood Elementary improved their letter grade. Give them a round of applause. Phenomenal work. Phenomenal, phenomenal work. You see in yellow on this chart, early college mean, they had the exact same score from the prior year to the current year, but the score was an A. Curtis Elementary, same score from the prior year to the current year, their score was a C, and Guess Elementary. You also see on the bottom, campuses that actually declined or decreased in enrollment. I want to highlight Fletcher Elementary School. Fletcher decreased, but they're still a B-rated campus, and Regina Howell, still a B-rated campus. So, can we give them a round of applause for maintaining strong performance? Now, there are some significant decreases that we certainly have to work on. If you notice on this chart, Fail Elementary, Fail Price Elementary, and Smith Middle School, these are campuses that were not operated by Beaumont ISD for the past several years. We have taken over management of those campuses. We know we have a lot of work to do, but I'm excited about the work that's going on, the leadership that we've put in place, and the excitement and enthusiasm that I've already seen for going in and executing the work. You know, we are focused on getting the work done. I know there's been a lot of distractions in the media about the accountability system and about potential sanctions for Beaumont ISD, but I want to ensure and make sure that our team understands, we're not focused on that. We are focused on doing the work every single day for every single child. The Commissioner has not made any decisions regarding Beaumont ISD. We have lots and lots of work to do, and I'm very optimistic about the direction that the district is going. So, I want our team to really know that we are focused in. We are focused, we are committed, and we are going to execute the work and execute the plan. In order to do that, we need our community. We need our community to support us. Those campuses that are in red on this list, we need community support. The campuses that have green on the list, we need community support. There's a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done, and I shared with the parents at our supper with the Superintendent on Tuesday, when we talk about our number-one board outcome goal, which is ensuring that our students read on grade level by the end of third grade. In order for students to read on grade level by the end of third grade, that's not gonna happen in the seven-and-a-half hours that we have our kids at school. We can teach them everything, every single day, every minute of that seven-and-a-half hours, which we will, but in order to be a better reader, you have to do what? You have to read. And you have to read outside of the hours and the time that you are in school. So, we're really pushing for our community and our parents, our guardians, to invest in your child's education. In order for us to really and truly improve the way we want to improve, we need a level of investment from our community that we haven't seen in prior years. So, I'm asking our community to support your child's schools, support the work that they are doing. It's always frustrating to me when you see these accountability scores. You walk on our campuses and you see the work that's happening, and we're graded based upon the results of one snapshot in time, one day. We're not graded on the heart. We're not graded on the passion. We're not graded on how hard our staff works for those hundred and seventy-five days of the school year to prepare our students. But when you are in a situation where you see the red and you want to see more green, it takes a commitment from every individual associated with that school and with that child. So, I'm making a plea, you know, to our community right now. If you haven't invested in our schools, you need to invest in our schools. You need to invest in our kids. Our kids need to be reading on grade level, every single child. So, make certain that as a parent, as a community member, if you are a community member, that you make an investment in the schools that are in your neighborhood, because they need individuals who are investing and spending time and helping. And I'll share some opportunities for you to do so at the conclusion of the program. But I certainly want our community and our team to know, we're doing the work. The work is hard. The work is hard, but we're up for the challenge, and we've been up for the challenge, and we're gonna continue to keep driving, keep moving, keep moving the needle. It doesn't move as fast as we wanted to move, and that's frustrating. We wanted to move super fast, but in order to escalate it again, we need the support of our families to make certain that kids are doing what? They're investing in their learning, that they're coming to school. One of the things that I was disappointed about the first three days of school last week, I received the attendance for the first three days of school, and our attendance rate was ninety-five point one, I think, or point three. When you think about the fact that we'd only been in school three days, we should have had ninety-nine percent just for three days, because you can't be absent on the first day. So, the second and the third day between, out of three days, we were at ninety-five percent. So, what I'm saying is, in order for us to do the job that we need to do, we need our kids to be present in the learning environment every single day, and we need our families and parents invested in the learning. Next week, we start Goals Night. You know, every parent of a child should be at their school's Goals Night. High schools begin next Wednesday. Every high school parent should be there to hear the individual data from the school. If you want to know how your school is performing individually, you need to be at six o'clock at your child's school on Wednesday for high school, Thursday for middle school, and the following week, elementary school, so that you can hear the plans, how we're gonna implement and execute change on our campuses. But again, you know, this is a new year. We're going all in, all year, but not just the staff and the people who get a paycheck. We need our whole community to go all in, all year. So, I'm sending out that plea right now, and believing and very optimistic that we're gonna get the support that we need in order to continue moving our students forward. As we move forward into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, you know, you've heard us talk during multiple presentations about some key changes and things that we're doing to continue to accelerate and increase student performance. And implementation of Blue Bond curriculum for our elementary schools is big, is going really well so far. Excited about the progress that we're seeing. We're continuing with our literacy intervention plan. You know, we started last year with phonics in third, fourth, and fifth grade. We're continuing that plan because we saw great growth there. Data-driven instruction, small groups, we changed our schedules, we added advisory periods at the secondary campuses for intervention. And then, of course, leadership coaching and targeted instructional support. Now, this is not all, but these are some of the key strategies that we are implementing and continuing to implement in order to drive change, in order to drive student outcomes. One of the things that I really want to celebrate is our performance on college, career, and military readiness. According to the twenty-four, twenty-five accountability ratings, Beaumont ISD CTE industry-based certifications, the results for CCMR, we are tied with the state. The state was at thirty-five percent, and Beaumont ISD was at thirty-four point nine percent. Yes, give our team a round of applause. Excellent job, Dr. Prudential and her team. And additionally, our Level One and Level Two certifications exceeded that of the state. The state was at one point one percent, and Beaumont ISD were at eight point one percent. So, just a few additional updates. You know, a major change this year is the implementation of House Bill fourteen eighty-one, creating phone-free schools in Beaumont ISD. Everyone knows, because we've spoken about the implementation of the yonder pouches prior to this legislation being enacted. We've talked about our plans to, you know, reduce the distractions, increase the engagement. And we started on the first day of school. I've touched bases with several principals. I've spoken to Mr. Phillips, Ms. Long, Ms. Ferris. I've spoken to a couple of middle school principals, just to get an idea of, you know, how's the implementation going. And overall, they've shared with me, you know, their growing pains. Ms. Long told me today, she said, "Well, Dr. Allen is going really well." She said, "However, some kids are going through withdrawals." And that's the truth. They are going through withdrawals from not having access to their phone, so they're doing what kids do, and they try to circumvent the system, okay? And there are consequences for circumventing the system. I would say, you know, over ninety-five percent of our kids are really working hard with making certain that they follow through on the execution of the plan, but kids who don't, unfortunately, they're gonna suffer the consequences. Parents cannot opt out, parents cannot opt out of students putting their phones in the pouches. Students cannot intentionally destroy the pouches. There are consequences for that. And one of the things that I asked our parents during the presentation on Tuesday night, did anybody really know why the state implemented this bill? Like, why did the state implement the bill? And nobody raised their hand. And I gave the analogy that was given to me when my husband told me that when he was in school, they could smoke in the seventies. They had smoking areas for high school students. We're appalled by that today, but back in the seventies and sixties and eighties, you could smoke at school. Well, the reason you could smoke at school was because what? They didn't know better. Nobody knew of the implications for addiction, cancer, all of the things that we know now. So, this is the same scenario with students having access and being on the cellphones all day long. Nobody really realized the implications when it first started, with students having unfettered access to the internet, and the fact that, you know, man, anxiety, depression, students not being able to process, students not being able to think. You know, all of those things are factors that really causes us to, hey, you know what? This is really not a great thing. This is not a good thing for our kids. So, the yonder pouch, it is a tool that is working despite what you may see on social media. You see kids breaking a rule, but kids do that sometimes. And again, there are consequences for that, but it's a tool that we are utilizing to ensure that our schools are cellphone-free. Kids are talking more, there's much more engagement, and we know it's going to continue to get better over time. And I'm expecting and anticipating that, you know, once we get through the pains of, you know, students going through the withdrawals that they're going through, recognizing that, you know, this is a rule, you are going to follow the rule. You have to follow the rule. Parents can't tell their students not to follow the rules at school. And I'm saying this publicly, parents, you cannot tell your children that they don't have to follow the rules at school. We don't tell our kids, well, don't follow your parents' rules when you go home. Just do what we said do, but don't do what your mom and dad told you to do. We don't do that. We don't do that. So, we don't expect our parents to tell our kids not to follow. This is a law. This is actually a law. So, I appreciate all of the kids and the parents that are actually doing the right thing and making good choices. And I'll tell you this, you know, as we, because we're gonna survey kids, and we're gonna survey families in a couple of weeks, but I know that kids, many of the kids are liking it. Many of the kids are going to, over time, really start realizing how much better they feel being able to what? Talk to each other and not be so connected to, you know, connected to that cellphone, and how much better they're gonna be able to learn. So, just wanted to provide an update about our yonder implementation. And again, you know, as we go all in this year, we have a couple of things that we want to encourage our community to do. Number one, volunteer. If you want to volunteer and support our schools, the QR code is there. You can also go to our website, and you can follow through on the prompts and the steps. It's pretty simple, but you can volunteer. You can also apply to be a Beaumont ISD influencer. Formerly, we had the ambassador program, but this is a new advanced program, BISD influencers. So, we would like for individuals who are really interested in a deeper understanding of Beaumont ISD and to help continue to build trust and foster partnerships, to join our Beaumont ISD influencer program. And of course, when you volunteer, we have multiple opportunities for you to actually work on a campus, to actually support kids. We have the Roar Lauder Program. Ms. Henrietta Savoy is gonna talk a little bit about that in the next presentation. We also have the Be The One Mentor Program. Ms. Tara Gage Chavis is our at-risk coordinator. We are looking for mentors for our kids. And of course, we shared about Campus Champions, which are churches that come in and adopt the school. We have other opportunities for you to support what's happening on your campuses, but first, you have to volunteer. You have to reach out and volunteer. And last, again, I've already mentioned Goals Night, but Goals Night is happening August twenty-seventh for high schools at six o'clock, August twenty-eighth for middle schools, and September third for our elementary schools. So, again, save those dates, and we look forward to seeing all of our families at Goals Night. Any questions? This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Report.
Good evening. Tonight's cabinet report will provide an update on BISD's pre-K partnership initiative and Roar program. The beginning of the presentation will be delivered by Ms. Valerie Macklin. I'll ask her to join me now. She is our coordinator of elementary reading and language arts for grades K-1, and also our early childhood coordinator. Ms. Macklin has served as the lead for our pre-K partnership initiative since its launch in 2021. She is our early childhood champion.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, Board, Dr. Allen, and community guest. Tonight, I have the privilege of sharing a story. You know, in pre-K, the read aloud is everything. So, here we go. This is a story not just about data or programs, but about how BISD has been working to transform opportunity into reality for our youngest learners. This is the story of where we started, the challenges we faced, the partnerships we built, and the future we are creating together for children, families, and our community workforce. Let's begin in 2021. That year, the number told a sobering truth. Seven hundred and seventy-five three-year-olds in Beaumont were eligible for pre-K but did not receive services through the district. Another forty-six were eligible four-year-olds. They were also without access. These aren't just statistics. These are our children. In our neighborhoods, children starting kindergarten already behind, no fault of their own. We looked closely at the barriers. Three-year-olds who could not get into Bingham Head Start had no public school option. Many community daycare classrooms had no certified teachers, and perhaps most significantly, these students weren't in our data systems, meaning we couldn't track their progress or include them in statewide accountability. It became clear that if we wanted a different outcome, we had to do something different. The solution began with a simple, powerful question. What if we could take BISD quality instruction into the places where children were already attending? We began conversation with local daycare centers, looking for a way to merge the heart of early learning in the community with the rigor and resources of the district. In 2021, our very first pre-K partnership classroom opened its doors. That first partnership was with World of Color Daycare. From day one, a BISD-certified teacher stepped into that classroom every day, bringing our district's pre-K curriculum and instructional expectations. The students were officially connected to Peach MacArthur Pre-K eight, making them part of the campus community, not just visitors. In essence, we brought the district into the daycare, and the daycare into the district. And it worked. Because these students were now in our data system, we could benchmark their learning through CLI Engage. At PMAC, the beginning of your data for 2024 showed that forty-eight At PMAC, the beginning of year data for two thousand and twenty-four showed that forty-eight percent of students were meeting tier-one expectations. But by the end of that year, the number grew to seventy-six. At World of Color, growth moved from the fiftieth percentile to the sixty-second percentile. These gains weren't abstract. They represented real skills gained and children more prepared for kinder and beyond. Well, success bought momentum, and this year, we are adding two more daycare partners. Creative Learning Center and Tot Town Two, each paired with a BISD elementary school. Amelia with Creative Learning, Blanchette with Tot Town Two. Each will have a certified BISD teacher providing daily instruction, data tracking, and campus connections. We anticipate sixteen to twenty students per site, all fully integrated into the attendance counts and accountability measures. Our launch date, August twenty-eighth, just a few days from now. But our work isn't just about serving more children. It's also about creating a pipeline to the future. We've extended the Child Development Associate's pre-K partnership certification pathway to Paul Brown Learning Center students. This means our high schoolers are not just studying early childhood. They're stepping into a real BISD pre-K classroom at World of Color to gain experience and earn credentialing while they're still at school. This dual-credit collaboration with Lamar Institute of Technology provides over one hundred and twenty hours of coursework plus four hundred and eighty internship hours. At the end, students graduate with a Level One CDA certification. This is more than workforce training. It's growing our own future BISD teachers and assistants. Many of them who will come back to serve the same community where they grew up. So where do we go from here? We continue to expand, we continue to innovate, and we continue to say yes to opportunities that make early childhood education accessible, equitable, and effective. In BISD, we believe that pre-K partnerships aren't just about readiness for kindergarten. They're about readiness for life. At this time, I'd like to recognize those who have made our journey possible. I'd like to begin with our partnership principals. When I call your name, would you please stand? Peach MacArthur Principal, Ariana Moore. Paul Brown Principal, Dr. Calvin Rice. Amelia Elementary Principal, Fred Owens. And Blanchette Principal, April Johnston. I would also like to have our daycare director stand and be recognized. Courtney Lynch, World of Color. Our very first daycare to partner with. Sabrina Delafosse, Creative Learning. And Leela Cormier, Tot Town Two. I'd also like to recognize our BISD pre-K partnership teachers. Megan Thomas, World of Color. Glory Jones, who will be at Creative Learning. And I'd like to acknowledge Ashley Hebert. She will be at Tot Town Two. And Dr. Gatsy Gibbs, our Paul Brown workforce teacher. They were unable to make it today. And lastly, we would like to recognize our Bingham Principal, Valencia Greenwood, who is. Mrs. Greenwood has hired our first CDA graduate as a peer professional at her campus, helping us continue to move forward. Thank you, Ms. Greenwood. Thank you all for your dedication, collaboration, and vision that have turned this idea into a true success story for our children and our community. And I'd also, before we close, like to thank our board for being such an advocate and our cabinet members. Thank you so much for your support. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, President Sookie. Ms. Macklin, uh, no questions, just a comment. We are thrilled beyond belief. Because as a board, we have been requesting additional partners. I know Ms. Higman may have something to add after I finish, but I want to congratulate everyone that you announced. But, um, what do I wanna say? It's positive. It's positive. Uh, what is the cycle of continuation of adding? Because we are thrilled, uh, Creative Learning, Tot To- Tot Town.
Tot Town Two.
Two, and she has a one and a three.
Yes, ma'am. She does.
I won't get into that.
We're gonna, we're gonna try to bring them into. We've already had that conversation, okay?
Well, you have thrilled us this evening, and we want to thank you and Dr. Frank and the team and Ms. Angelo for doing all of this. Because this is our foundation. I'm an early childhood person. I just have to add that. You cannot proceed further without the foundation, just like a home. The slab has to be legit. And you are doing that.
Thank you so much.
We want to thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Macklin.
Ditto to Ms. Wallace Spuder. I, I can't think of anything that is better for our district than, than expanding these partnerships. So thank you. And thank you to the groups that have agreed to do it.
Thank you so much. And if there are no more questions, I'd like to now continue our partnership story. Please help me welcome Mrs. Angelo and Mrs. Savoy, our district ROR coordinator, to give an overview of ROR.
Queen of ROR and the queen of community partnerships, Ms. Henrietta Savoy. Good evening, um, to our board president, our trustees, to our superintendent, and of course, to our community members. Before I begin the report, I would like to do something. So bear with me. It's, it's, it's good. It's legit, okay? So to you all, if you, I want you to clap your hands with me, okay?
Did y'all see the way she strolled up here? I knew she had something going on.
And now for the ROR report. I had to do that because I'm giving you a report, but you need to know that it's important to volunteer. Uh, and that's for our board as well as our community members. Okay, am I supposed to click this? Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, y'all. Bear with me. Okay, so August twenty-twenty-five, as you can see, these are some of our, uh, volunteers. Look at the smiles. I think the smile says it all. All right, so our growth, and I heard our superintendent today talking about growth, and growth is the number one thing from my understanding. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, as you can see, we have an active one-on-one volunteer of a hundred and thirty-eight. And you may ask, what is that one-on-one? That one-on-one is where a volunteer sits with one student. Because ROR also consists of guest readers. So our numbers tonight will not reflect the guest readers, only the one-on-one. So as you can see for twenty-four, twenty-five, which was last year, we had a hundred and ninety-seven. Look at the increase. I think it says forty-two percent increase. Wow, that's amazing. But I think we can do better. So I'm expecting for this year to be even greater. Okay, so ROR by campus. I have the campus. I have the number of ROR students. At the bottom, you can see it says four seventy-one. Then you see it says two seventy. That four seventy-one means that's where we started out at, the four seven, uh, four hundred and seventy-one students. But those students, either they left our district, went to another campus. But the most important thing is, some of them began to read at grade level or above. So they exit out of ROR. Amazing, right? So that mean, does ROR really work? The answer to that is? Oh, y'all got it. Yes. All right, so our reading level. Um, this here was from our M class. It's the B O Y, M O Y, and the E O Y. You may ask, what is that? That's the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and of course, the end of the year. And if you can look at that, of course, this is our second grade, but look at the B O Y score. Three twenty-four, three seventy-five, and the E O Y says four twenty-seven. Again, data don't lie, right? I see growth. Do you see growth? All right. All right, okay, we're gonna continue this growth, cause I really wanted you to see the graph for it. Just to see, I mean, look at the growth. Are y'all happy about that? All of our principals ought to be excited about that. All right, and now for our store reading outcomes. And of course, I have to partner with my literacy partner in crime here, Ms. Angelo.
So, and we, what are we seeing? Growth. We're seeing growth again because we added, of course, third through fifth grade students this year. Um, a hundred and ninety-six of them participated for the full year, and you can see the outcomes speak for themselves. So out of this seventy to seventy-three percent of those students who participated full year passed the STAR test. And these were students who were identified at the start of the year as not passing the STAR test, so big growth.
For twenty-four, twenty-five, we added some new partnerships, uh, with our ROR program. We added Baptist Hospital. They have been coming on board with our ROR as well as the City of Beaumont Police Department. And of course, our very own BISD Police Department. Uh, as well as the, uh, Beaumont Fire and Rescue Department, and of course, the one hundred-plus black men. And guess what? We're, we're gonna add more and more partnership. And today, I talked to Chief, and guess what she said? I can't let the City of Beaumont Police outdo us. We gotta do better. So we're expecting even more growth. And of course, this is just a few of our, uh, survey questions and answers that I put out to our parents, to our volunteers, to our community members. And one that I really wanted to read says, the child volunteered with made amazing progress. She went from struggling to being excited about reading. What a transformation. I think if our students enjoy reading, then they will enjoy learning. Do y'all agree with that? And of course, September next month is National Literacy Month. And we will have a ROR kickoff on September the eighth with our ROR liaisons. So, that is me, yours too, Ms. Henrietta Savoy. Your ROR Lauder Program Coordinator. At this time, do you have any questions for me?
Anybody? I think she answered all questions. The queen of ROR.
And I wanna thank our board president, uh, because he has already filled out his volunteer application. Which means that he is setting examples for us all to what? To follow. So, community members, let's get on board and ROR.
Thank you, Ms. Savoy. We have come to the time in the, uh, regular scheduled meeting for public comments. The board will now hear comments from those persons who have signed up to speak. This portion of the meeting is set aside for parents, students, employees, and community members to speak to the board about any matter of interest to them pertaining to the school program. Each person who signed up by four-thirty yesterday may speak for no more than two-point-five minutes. Those who signed up after that time and prior to the public comments today will be allowed to speak for one-point-five minutes. During public comments, the board will listen, but it is forbidden by the Texas Opening Meetings Act from discussing any topic raised or making any decisions unless the matter is already on the agenda for this meeting. The board reminds speakers that public comment is not the time to bring up board complaints about a particular program, employee, or student. Should a speaker's remarks include complaints directed at a particular student, employee, or program, I will respectfully ask that that individual stop speaking and utilize the board adopted grievance procedures. As a reminder, your time is monitored. When your time to speak is up, you will hear a buzzer that will indicate your time has expired. Ms. Smith, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. The first for two and a half minutes, our first speaker will be Corey Cole.
Mr. Cole? Yeah, Mr. Cole here. Ms. Smith, can you call the next person?
The second person would be Cohen Cole.
Cohen Cole, are you here? Mr. Cole, are you here? Is there anyone else?
The third person to sign up is Jewel Cole.
Jewel Cole. Jewel Cole, are you present? Ms. Smith, the next person.
The final person for two and a half minutes is Jennifer Moore.
Ms. Moore, are you here? Come on down. The price is right. Hey, we put you in a pinch. Well, clap it up. Let me see.
Uh, thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you guys again. I'm back. Um, first, I would like to start with good news. My daughter and my son are both adjusting to bright new schools very well. Um, doing great. My daughter, I think God, is back at Regina Elementary, which is where I bought my house, which is where I wanted her to go. Um, thank you to Ms. Principal Wong for sending me the correct paper to request the twenty-five, twenty-six camera in her classroom, which I did fill out. Thank you to Ms. Michelle Brooks for approving that request in a timely manner and getting it back to me. I do appreciate that. My next step is to request cameras at my son's school and my son's class at Marshall. But I'd like to ask, what's your next step? What about the kids in Amelia? What about the eighty-four other self-contained classrooms that we have in the district with kids that can't speak for themselves? And kids who can speak not be validated? There needs to be cameras in all self-contained classrooms across the board, across the district. I really, and I, I'm so excited about the pre-K programs and all of that. I have a heart for early education. I, there's a lot of wonderful, amazing things that are happening at BISD. I don't want to be the person that speaks bad against them. But I need to know that my kids and the other kids, not just my daughter, but all kids with disabilities are being taken care of. And not just moved to different campuses, because that's what happens. When something's going on and it gets reported, the kid gets moved and nothing is actually done about the incident. And that's a problem. I thank you very much for hearing me. And I would really like for there to be a policy made to be put in black and white for if there is an accused teacher, for them to be removed from the classroom until the investigation is complete. Instead of based on the merit of the claim or whether or not it has validity in somebody else's personal opinion. Thank you for hearing me. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? Next person?
For one and a half minutes, Larry Gochey.
Mr. Gochey, come on down. Price is Right.
Good evening, board.
Evening.
Superintendent. I normally don't speak.
I normally sit back and listen. I learn a lot by listening. And tonight, I learned something that sometime God puts you in places where you get a chance to see things that open your eyes. And this happened on July fourth of twenty-twenty-four. And I was at Star Break. There was a old magazine from Texas Monthly dated March twenty-twenty-three. Not twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three. And an article caught my eye. The campaign to sabotage Texas Public Schools. That didn't sit well with me because y'all were doing a great job. Didn't sit well with me at all. Anyway, uh for myself, about my qualifications, PNA Operator, Ex-Armored Mobile Office Cooperation for Power Plants One, Two, Three, and Four, on the hurricane shutdown and startup team, water treating technician two and three. And that's just a little bit about me, put in forty-eight and a half years. And with all of that, again, y'all did a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Gochey. Onto our informational items. Personnel.
Good evening, Board. You have before you this evening a listing of newly hired and separated employees uh for the month of uh July. Uh, next month, you'll see uh the uh, the report uh with many uh pages uh added because uh as of today, we've hired across our district this summer, three hundred and ninety-five employees. Of those three hundred and ninety-five employees, one hundred and ninety-five uh were teachers. Uh, of that, half of those teachers were certified. Uh, half of those uh teachers are in the process of being certified. Any questions?
Yes, you said a hundred and ninety-five are certified?
A hundred, uh, the hundred and ninety-five teachers is what, uh, is what we hired, the amount that we hired. Of that, half of those teachers are certified. The other half is in the process of certifying.
Questions?
How are we, uh, I can tell you that we are well under one hundred. And so it was uh one hundred before the, uh, the start of uh the summer. And so I think that, uh, I think we're around seventy-five, around seventy-five.
Any other questions, Mr. Samuels? Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn.
I'm sorry. Uh, of the ones that are not certified, are they in the program in Region Five?
Not all of them, no, sir. So, uh, our adjunct program, we give them a timeframe uh to gain their certification. Uh, a, a lot of the vacancies that you saw was that we did a, uh, did a, did a purge of those who did not meet that timeframe uh this year, and so we have uh extended that for one year for, for those who actually showed growth. And so, uh, uh, our principals uh dug deep into the data and identified those uh adjunct teachers that showed our student, uh, showed, uh, showed growth within our students academically, and we extended them for an additional year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hernandez.
Good evening, Board. Um, for the Tax Office Report, we had tax collections in the amount of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and sixty-two cents for maintenance and operation, and a hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and thirty-four sixty-two in debt service. So, uh, for the month of July, we are ninety-seven point three percent collected. Any questions? For the General Fund, we had um revenues. This is the first month in our new fiscal year, so our revenues were one million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And then we also had expenditures of four million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. We had outstanding purchase orders of five million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. The campuses collected two thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars in the month of July, and we do not have any donations to report this month. We're also going to uh report our quarterly investment report for the period, May thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five. So, um, the quarter started in March of twenty-twenty-five, and it goes through May thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five. And we had um a hundred and two million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-six cents in investments. Any questions about those? We also have a new report uh tonight as the request of a board member for our uh federal and state grants. Reflected on here are our title grants through the ESEA. Uh, the Title One, Two, Three, and Four, the district receives um close to ten million dollars from title grants. And then for IDAB, this is to ensure uh students with disabilities receive um appropriate public education. We received just under four million dollars in the IDEAB grants. And then for other federal grants, which um Head Start is one of our federal grants, and we received Perkins money through the Career Technical um Education Program. And then we had three Lasso Grants. Those totaled just over five million dollars. And then we also received some state grant awards for um Strong's Foundation Technology Lending Grant, our state deficit estimated amounts. And those are just under two million dollars. You're very welcome. Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Moore.
Yes, I'm not sure, Ms. Hernandez, who to target besides Dr. Allen and to you banking this report. Uh, we have been asking, it's like Christmas, in uh August. I guess, you know, you get one present, you want another one. Uh, like the uh partners with the uh daycares, we have been asking for an in-house grant writer. And this would only be to suffice what you just reported. The more we can bring in, will benefit our district. So I'm just going to, uh, just check with Ms. Hickman on that again. That's something we definitely have been asking for, someone that is dynamic, that can bring money to our district, an in-house grant writer. Ms. Hernandez, you might wanna say something.
We'll talk about that, but I don't think Ms. Hernandez decided her purview to get a grant writer. We'll have a discussion. The superintendent.
Yes, so President Segi, that'll go back to Dr. Allen. That's why when I started out, I said, I'm not sure where to plant that seed, but it's something we've been requesting. Thank you.
That concludes my reports.
Any more questions for Ms. Hernandez?
Thank you.
We are now ready for the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to pull anything, any item off the consent agenda for a discussion? Was there a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Hickman and second by Mr. Evans. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. We are now ready for our action items. Is there anything we discussed in closed session?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Uh, I move the board authorize the superintendent to take any and all action necessary to withdraw Beaumont ISD from the legal proceeding in the matter of social media adolescent addiction slash personal injury products liability litigation. Case number four-two-two dash M D dash zero-three-zero-four-seven dash Y G R M D L number three-zero-four-seven.
There are second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes six zero.
Mr. President, I recommend that the board approve budget amendments from the General Fund Two and accept amendments from Special Revenues Three, Four, and Five.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion? Get a motion first.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Evans, second by Mr. Dunn. Discussion, Ms. Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Segi. Um, we have uh a few carry-forward purchase orders from the previous year. As we're closing out things um for transportation, uh, we had purchase order for ten thousand dollars. And then in uh technology, we had two thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And then also in I T, two hundred and one thousand, six hundred and one. And then we have one movement between the functions. So we're asking the board to appropriate the funds in this year for our purchase orders issued from the previous year. And then we have um moving between the functions in our Title One Part A and S R Three. And then um some movement between functions in Title Three Part A and S, S R Four. And S R Five is Title Four, moving funds between the functions for them to be able to appropriate those funds. Any questions?
Any more question? Question? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Mr. President, I recommend that the board approve purchases over fifty thousand dollars from the General Fund in the amount of one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars from federal funds in the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. And from the instructional materials allotment in the amount of one million, forty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-four cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Dunn and second by Ms. Avery. Ms. Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Segi. The first purchase for Thomas Bus um in the amount of one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, three fif- three hundred and fifty dollars is from our one-time funds that we appropriated to begin a replacement program for all, all the buses that were purchased at one time. We're gonna try to purchase between eight and ten, depending on the price each year, and this is the beginning of that. Um, for our federal fund purchases, these are continuations for online um software programs that we utilize. And, and then Relay G S E is for the uh school-based executive-level coaching and training. And those total two hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. And then these are instructional materials that we will be utilizing the funds that the state allocated through um instructional materials allotment. And those um are listed Carnegie Learning, McGraw-Hill, and then C E V Multi-Me- Multimedia LLC. And these are all in the classroom. Are there any questions about the instructional materials or any of the other purchases?
Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Not so much a, a question, just a comment on the, on the school buses. Cuz I just remember a time when I wasn't on the school board, maybe several years ago, maybe ten, twelve years ago. I don't, I don't quite remember, but we bought an entire fleet of school buses, and it was really, really expensive. And it was because we had kinda overlooked or neglected the fact that we needed school buses kinda often. So I, I just wanna commend you, Dr. Allen, of course, uh, you, Ms. Hernandez, in your, in your foresight, in your vision to, to make these small uh gradual progressive changes instead of us being in a situation where we have to buy or replace an entire fleet of school buses. So it's, it's obvious that you're paying attention to those types of things and learning uh a great deal of lessons from the past. So uh, I just wanna commend you on that, cuz it, it blew my mind maybe a decade ago when it happened, when I just kinda sat out in all the audience. And I always said, you know, if I was on the school board, I wouldn't do it like that, so.
Well, it's a bad deal.
Okay, alright, so, 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 so thank you.
Five hundred, you gotta place a hundred.
Right, right, right. So, so thanks for, for, for uh, uh, approaching that in a, in a gradual and progressive way. I think that, that's commendable. So thank you.
Ms. Hickman?
I've never seen such a, a long list of specifications. I think it would be interesting if the public knew this, that exactly what's gonna be on these buses goes on from page after page after page. I think it's really impressive.
Anyone else?
Seat belts. They are required to have seat belts now, which we already had seat belts on our buses, but with new legislation that recently passed, all buses have to have seat belts.
And these will definitely have cameras as well. We do put cameras on our new buses.
Anyone else have a question, discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I recommend that the board approve the agreement between World of Color Development Center, Taotown Two, and Creative Learning Centers in the Beaumont Independent School District for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Let me get a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Dunn, second by Ms. Hickman.
Thank you, President Segi. This evening, the administration is seeking board approval to continue and expand its pre-K partnerships. We recommend that the board approve M O U agreements to continue our partnership with World of Color, begin a new partnership with Creative Learning Center, and also a partnership with Taotown Two.
Any discussion? Anyone? I mean, they gave such a great presentation, I think, uh, all answers, questions were answered. All those in favor? Motion carries six zero.
Mr. President, I recommend that the board approve the appointment of Ms. Valencia Greenwood as Director of the Beeman Head Start Program.
Motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Dunn and second by Ms. Avery.
Thank you. Ms. Greenwood is here tonight. Ms. Greenwood, can you come forward?
That's my classmate. That is a nineteen seventy-nine Beaumont Chautauq pilot cougar.
The Office of Head Start requires that all key positions receive approval from the Board of Trustees and then be submitted for final approval to the Office of Head Start. Tonight, the administration recommends the appointment of Valencia Greenwood as Director slash Principal of Beeman Head Start. Ms. Greenwood was selected for this role based on her demonstrated leadership, strong fiscal management skills, and proven success in early childhood program administration.
Any discussion? All those in favor? You got anything you wanna say, Valencia? The floor is yours.
Superintendent Allen, Board President, and to the board, and also to this illustrious cabinet, and to my wonderful Beeman family, and also to my family. My husband is here, my family is here, my children, my grandchildren. It is an awesome opportunity. I am humbled to serve as the principal director of a program that I am passionate about. Uh, for me, it is because of the love that I have for young children. Um, four decades of e- in education. I love what I do. Uh, you all who know me know that it's real. So I wanna thank each of you for giving me the opportunity, and I uh will, you can.
will, you can entrust me to do the job of, um, of the trailblazer. Uh, so we are empowering, uh, new leaders. I'd like to ask the leadership team of Beeman Head Start to stand. All staff at Beeman, all of our staff at Beeman Head Start, please stand. All staff. And so, thank you. Thank you for everything, and you, I, I promise to do my best.
Now, now, I got all excited till I skipped some stuff. Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second by Ms. Avery. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, classmate. V C P carries the way a husband is a graduate of Beaumont Charlton pilot. Candace, you still here? Belinda's still here? Cougars lead the way. We've come to a closing this meeting. I appreciate all of you staying all the way through. We're gonna start with Mr. Evans.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna say, first of all, Georgia, Georgia. Now, you, you know I love you, but I had to pull that out. So, uh, Ms. Georgia, we're gonna definitely miss you. I love you so much, and I appreciate everything you've done for me. Uh, from my first day on the school board when I knew nothing to, uh, I still don't know very much, but, uh, but I appreciate your help and your guidance and just, uh, sometimes being a listening ear for me complaining about whatever it is I need to complain about. Um, so, so thank you. Uh, happy trails and enjoy yourself. And to our principals, teachers, cabinet, Dr. Allen, fellow board members, Chief Maxwell, I don't, I, I, I can go on for days. Durbin, you too. Listen. Forget about what you see in the media. Put your blinders on and laser focus on the goals that we know we have in front of us. Yes. You, you are, yes, yes, you are most definitely doing God's work. And I heard Ms. Spooner give this scripture, and I won't go into it, but it's something about, never mind. But anyways, stay focused, y'all. And know that we're in it together, and, um, we're gonna be alright, so just stay on it. So thank y'all.
Ms. Avery?
Great job tonight. Great job. Such great presentations. Thank you so much for those amazing presentations tonight, favor. I'm on top of the world seeing those collaborations in the community, and that's what it takes, all of those collaborations. Thank you so very much for that. Roar, she's still here? You're roaring. We're roaring. Thank you so very much, and keep your energy at all times. Keep your energy, the community needs that, and we do too. Staff, friends, all that are here. We are all in all year. All in all year! Every day, all day. We're in. Thank you so very much. I've only been here a very short mi- uh, time, but Ms. Georgia, thank you. You are amazing. You are amazing. Enjoy retirement. Love you. Oh, one more thing. I'll be at Goals Night for C T E. Thank you. I'll be at Goals Night. Thank you.
Mr. Dunn? Chief?
For the last six years, Ms. Georgia has kept me straight. She has told me when you need to tone it down a little bit. She has my back the whole six years I've been on the school board. She keeps us informed about everything, even when we a little bit late, and she has told us twenty times today. So I'm gonna miss you, Ms. Georgia. So you can block my number, but I know where you live. But I just wanted to say thank you for all the, uh, hard work that you've put in for the district for the last thirty years, and we appreciate you. If everyone else out there, you got this. With the, uh, induction of these, uh, pouches, I am one hundred percent, one hundred percent knowing that this is gonna be one of our best years ever. Keep focused. I just, I just wanna a- a- appreciate the way that this school year has, has started out. Everybody is focused on what you're doing right now, and it's worth it. And you're gonna see the results of your labor. And don't worry about nothing else outside of what you're doing for these students, cause that's the only thing that matters. So, Dr. Allen, you and your staff, I, I really appreciate your efforts that you've been putting out, and y'all just keep on, keep it on. Thank you.
Ms. Spooner?
Thank you, President Segi. I'd like to concur with my fellow board members on everything that has been said thus far, but I did this far, but I wanna say, Georgia. Georgia. I tell you, we've had many moments together, and she is definitely a phenomenal woman. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, you may go for or go somewhere. I'm telling her she's gonna be back anyway, but she will forever be in our hearts up here. She has a wonderful relationship with all of us, and this is, uh, targeted to President Segi. Dear old Hebert High. We love you and will always be true part of our song and our motto that rings out even, uh, today. A coin by Mr. James F. Jackson, the principal of Hebert High School. He did this many years ago. That's what impact is. And just to say it tonight as I close, it's whatever Hebert does must be the best, and we're still the best. And so I'm giving, sending a shout out to my classmates that are watching right now. I'm sure they're still viewing us. But they're the greatest, and, um, I'm glad they showed up tonight in a big way. And I know this district loves them because they are a product of what? Us. Thank you, President Segi.
Blah, blah, blah. Ms. Ms. Hickman?
Well, since I grew up outside of Beaumont, I'm not going to get into this particular rivalry. Mister Boy, thank you for my lying. And thank you, Georgia, for an awful lot, excuse me, an awful lot of good things over an awful lot of years. We appreciate you. We love you, and we'll miss you.
The two of us. Hold on, Ms. Hickman, are you done?
I think so.
Oh, okay. I just wanna make sure you finish.
And I'm sure you were going to do this, but you will add the whipped cream to it.
Okay.
We welcome Tish Smith. We love her. She's over there with Georgia. We love you.
Yes. Doc?
Just thank you so much to all of the team for such a great start to the school year. I think everything that has been said is well received. I, I just appreciate our team in advance for really going all in all year. You know, last Friday, we had a, I asked everybody to wear the yellow shirts. And everybody wore the yellow shirts. It was so special to just see that people really and truly appreciated it, and it's really nice to be in the community. And you go out after work and you see these yellow shirts all over. They represent sunshine and Beaumont ISD, so I really like that. So we will be doing it several more times this year. And, and last but certainly not least, you know, just so appreciative of Georgia. You know, they don't make 'em like Georgia anymore. Georgia has been phenomenal in her work, her professionalism, her drive, her execution. She stays ahead of everything for every body. And when you work with individuals and you just don't have to worry about them doing their job, that is so precious. And she knows, you know, how much I appreciate her. And the fact that she's going to be back, she's gonna send out her thirty days, but we've already worked out her little sub schedule, so I'm not too worried about it. She'll be coming back for a few months helping and assisting in some things. And I told her she would definitely be bored, so you know, she can dance around here all she want for a little bit. But then she'll be calling, you know what? You got something for me to do, doc? Always, but just really appreciate her and welcome Ms. Tish Smith, who's gonna be coming in, who's already coming in, doing a, doing a great job, so Happy Friday, team. And it is eight oh six.
Yeah, yeah, we are smoking. Okay, I, can I tell y'all a little short story? You know, in, in two thousand and five, I was in Iraq. And, uh, it was common for them to shoot at the planes when we traveling. And I'm coming from the south in Iraq, going to Baghdad. And they were shooting, and we could hit bouncing off the plane. And everybody's nervous. I'm sitting up basically in the cockpit. And, uh, one of the engines went out. And that along with the bullets hitting the plane. The captain said, we're gonna be alright. I've done this before. It's not a problem, sorry, major. I relayed that message to the soldiers. Just hang tight, buckle up. We got an experienced pilot. Then we start the corkscrew coming down to land a plane. He's still confident. He tell me, sorry, major, I'mma land this plane. I don't care what goes on, you are gonna be alright. You're in good hands. We gonna be fine. Cat lands the plane. We come screaming down the runway. That engine's on fire. One of the tires blow out, but he lands the plane. Sticks the landing. All my soldiers get off. He come out, and I shake his hand. Man, I say, I'm so confident in you. I'm glad you done it. And you know what he tells me? I've never landed a plane under those circumstances. I've never landed a plane. He say, but you know what, sorry, major? If I would've told you I was worried and I was concerned, you and everybody else would've freaked out. But listen, we have a captain. We have a captain. And listen, you are captains as well of your campuses. I don't care what the media says, you are a captain. You are gonna stick the landing with your teachers, with your students. That's what we need you to do. Stick the landing. Don't pay attention to all of this mess, all of these comments, all these naysayers. Stay focused. Put your earmuffs on. You don't have to pay atten- we are charged with educating children. We cannot stop educating children because we read some comments in the newspaper. Stick the landing. I don't care if the wheels fall off. Stick the landing. All in all year. That's what we need out of this district. All in all year. That's what we need. Ms. Georgia, I'mma call you later. I don't wanna cry when I'm talking to you. I'm, I'mma call you later. Listen up. Thank you all for staying. We appreciate you. I'm gonna support you all in all year. I've been to every campus. The only one I didn't get to see was Ms. uh, Guillory. She was doing something on Fletcher, but I went to every campus. Did I miss anybody? That's what I thought, but I'm coming out again. Y'all have a good evening.